Are there any adjustments to the agenda? I think with the policy review on number six, we're only going to be looking at the two policies that you had. Do you have those?
They're in the...
In here, okay.
Then the Budget Committee wants to just...
We will hold off on those for right now. Give you those when we come up to it. So there's no adjustments?
Nothing.
Thanks.
Nope.
All right. Minutes from prior meeting? One second. All those in favor? Signal if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Public comments. No longer than three minutes if we can keep it to that. Dolly?
Over fifty years ago, I planted daylilies ten feet deep, the length of our front yard. The mailbox was set back a car space away from the road edge. Since I've retired, I've had three new electric poles put in at the road's edge. All three were over fourteen feet from the road. Up until about twenty-five years ago, cars were able to park in front of, on the cemetery lawn for funerals and visiting the graves. Over the last twenty-five years, I watched as my lawn was graded away. An inch to five inches each year, the road moved over. Since Earl Sprague owned the fields across the road, the trees were allowed to grow bigger each year, while I kept my road edge cut back ten feet. As those trees grow, grew, the road moved away from them. The electric poles, daylilies, now they're only five feet deep. The mailbox on my side of the road never moved, but the electric poles are now thirteen feet, twelve and a half feet, and eight feet from the road. The mailbox got hit several times by the plow, and in the last year, the road has moved another foot into my lawn and one half of the cemetery frontage area. I would like to have the flowers moved back onto my lawn, all five feet deep now or across the road. I heard that as soon as the town gets done fighting the Martins on Route 35, that the selectmen will be after me.
Any updates on a couple of things I asked last month with the getting the sheriff down on Brooklyn Road for ski patrols?
I talked with one on Upper Road, and he said that he was going to be down this way, all the way down. I don't know if he has it or not.
I haven't seen anybody at all, but...
I know that they're pretty busy right now. They have a few contracts and things, and at times like that, when they're looking for officers, sometimes they, the contracts are not, they don't fulfill it as much each month in the busy months when they have other... I don't know if that's the case at this point, but... What was the other?
The other one was if you had a leak on any old utility poles would get taken out.
I called the phone company, and I called the power company, and the phone company puts it all on the power company, and the power company puts it all on the phone company.
Exactly my experience.
Yep, so I don't know really the answer to that.
I think that, I think that they are telephone company poles because that way they're not taxed, but if they were power company poles, they are, is that right?
Yeah, because the power company, we do get an inventory for.
And then, but do you, are they poles? Do they say they have poles? No. So I think the phone companies, technically they belong to the phone company because then we can't tax the phone company.
That's what I was told many, many years ago when we had electricity run to our house, if we had to wait for the phone company to come in and place a pole before they would run electricity up to the house because the phone company owned the pole.
Good. Whether that's still the case, I'm not sure, but... Anything else?
No.
Nope.
There was a question, I think two meetings back, about a mailbox out here since the post office had closed. I talked with a Chester, a postmaster, and she indicated that to have an independent box like that, they usually need twenty-five pieces of mail a day. And she didn't think that that, that Athens would generate that much in a day. She wasn't even sure that we did, just picking up at the boxes, twenty-five pieces. So we would, we would not be able to get a, get a box out here, so... Sheriff, public comment?
Public comments. Yeah, question, and I'm not sure if I'm going to be here when we get to discussing roads, so I see that there's some culvert work that's getting going. Do we know yet whether we're going ahead?
Not until July 1st.
Not until July 1st, okay. If that goes ahead, are there plans for any, like, guardrails along the way on the road there?
It'd be after, non-pub, the state council.
Okay. Because across from our house is an area that I would think would be a good place, and I think Brad would be greatly appreciative of that because otherwise somebody could land on one of his roofs.
There are at least, there are at least a couple of places that you'd think that would...
Well, yeah, there's a number of places, but, you know, I mean, it's one thing to go flying off and land in an open field, and it's another thing to land on somebody's roof, so...
But, you know, as soon as that road has been the last couple of years, I don't think blacktop is going to add to speed anymore than what it is doing right now.
Uh-huh.
Because, you know, it's still like blacktop up there right now.
Yeah.
We went up there today, and I will admit, they do travel down through there.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I know.
But I don't think, I don't think the blacktop is going to bring the speed up anymore than what it is, but it being so smooth up there now. But it could.
Yeah, yeah, it sure could. I mean, with the, with the gravel, you have that, you know, sort of you can slide off on that, and maybe that won't happen so much if it's paved, but I was just curious about the...
Yeah, there's a couple of places, the other place I've been thinking about is, like, top of Mill Hill down around that corner right there.
Uh-huh. Yeah. Yeah, people have gone off just before Mill Hill and just after, I think. Okay, I think that's all I have to say.
All right. Town boards and officials. Andy?
Well, we've sent out the, we've sent out some letters for viewing because we're going to be starting on the 2019 grant list. You already know that we're, we don't have new policies from the Budget Committee. We'll get you a quarter to budget report at the next month's meeting because we'll finish up the payroll the end of this month, and then we'll be able to look at what we spent for the half a year. And then the only other question I had, which is more of just a tracking question, is we had budgeted seventy-five hundred dollars under contracted services to work on the underlayment work for the Route 35 paving job, and just, I don't know how your plan, if that's actually going to be contracted, or like, are some of the culverts that you've already bought, should they be put against that?
The culverts, the town is putting in.
Yeah.
Yeah, we already had some of the culverts out there. I had to use some of them out there, it's not a place that's...
So that's not part of that seventy-five hundred?
No, no.
Okay.
But that will be contracted to a guy with the town buying the material.
Okay, so when that comes along, just let Dolly and I know.
But we probably won't start that till after July 1st anyway.
Well, I don't know if it makes any difference, because we're going to get a hundred, we're going to get a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and that's it. We're going to keep track of the culvert work that we're doing right now, and when we do it, I'm going to keep track of that, and I'm not sure if that will go toward ten percent or not, but they said just keep track of the hours and the material.
Anything else, Andy? Sure.
So we had, Chris Cole came out, I know you guys were all invited, I think the information went on out by email to everyone on the board to join us. So we met with him and looked over the attic. Pam Russo from the committee and I were there, and my recollection from when I had been up there last was a little bit worse than it really was, so I want you to be reassured about that because when we talked, you were concerned. But there are certainly some issues up there that need to be addressed, and there are places where the gap is bigger, we believe, than what it was, but we didn't have any means of making that measurement in comparison. Anyway, what Chris's assessment was at that point was that if we're not proceeding within the next three months to do the more permanent stabilization that's needed up in the attic, then he would strongly recommend that we get some volunteers perhaps to come up in and put more of the struts that are in there supporting, is that the word you would use for those boards?
Yes. I'm not sure what the, what it is that he wants to...
Well, you know, the, the extra...
Like braces?
Braces, right. The extra braces that have been put in throughout the building, in the areas where we can see daylight now, and it's really worse on the side facing Meeting House Road versus the side facing the woods, to put like two more braces on each of those where that separation is significant, and that would be a good thing. If we're going to go ahead with the more complete work of stabilizing those in a more, in a more permanent manner within three months, then he wouldn't bother with that, and he would just encourage us to go ahead. So that's sort of the, you know, where we're at right now with that. So to do that more complete work, it would be a structural repair, and so it would require a permit and engineering inspection, which Chris can do that for us, which means we don't have to go back to Stevens and Associates, the architects, for planning, drawing, and all of that, so that should save us some money there. His expectation based on what we were looking at is that there are probably about six or seven places that will need work, and that might be basically a day's work of that. However, first, what, what he recommends is that we would have a timber framer. Jonathan Jessup perhaps, or someone else that has good skill and knowledge about timber framing, go up and assess all of the connections in there and determine which ones have failed. I don't know, does, does that terminology make sense to everybody when I say that connections have failed? Do you know what we're talking about? Yes?
Pretty much.
Yes, okay, all right. So as I said, he thinks that it's really about six or seven places that that would need to be assessed, but we, really be addressed, but it needs to be fully assessed first. And then get a recommendation again from that timber framer as to whether or not the best remedy would be pulling those connections back together, which would be a more involved option, especially on the side where the separation is greater, or if it's about securing in place and sealing it off from the elements. So those would be the two options of how one might proceed with that, and we would want their recommendation on that. He also...
How would they give us cost estimates, and what would be the longer term, better fix?
We can ask for that, for sure. I mean, yeah.
Because I mean, if one is, is going to be a fix for now, but you've got to do it in ten years, and, you know, it's just a little bit more to do it the correct way to pull it back.
Right. But pulling it back, I think, is more involved, especially again on that Meeting House Road side, where if you stand at the front corner of the building and look down that side and look up at the roof line, you can really see a bump out where those have kicked out. If you go over to the other side of the building, you can barely see it because it's really a much more minor change, and it's, it's at a seam of the, I don't know what the term is, for the wood that's going under the molding where the roof comes down, but there's a seam right there, and it's just a little bit out, but on the other side, it's like very apparent where that's out, and that's a pretty significant gap over there. He also would strongly recommend that part of the job include removing the bricks and...
Chimmy.
The, the bricks, right, thank you, bricks in the chimney, yes. The remnants of the chimney in the attic. And that would not be a volunteer light labor job, that would be skilled folks contracted up there to do that work, not volunteers. We also talked about restoring door and window sills. The front door, when we went to walk in, was actually, the sill was in pieces, so I put aside what was there, it's just, you know, because it hasn't been protected, and it's just taken the abuse of the elements, so that's really in need of attention. And what Chris was explaining to us is that you're not replacing, you're restoring, and so what they would do is someone who, you know, like Jonathan or another contractor who is experienced in that historical restoration piece, would take it back to where the wood is not rotted through, cut a straight line, and then cut a piece the same to put in, and then use epoxy to fill in all of the ridges and the remaining wood that's there that's worn, but it's, you know, the top is deteriorating, but it's not rotted through, so you would fill that with epoxy. And if you think about and can recall what the front door was like before Jonathan took it and then brought it back from his shop, it's that kind of restoration work that he did, which that door almost looks like a brand-new door at this point, but it isn't. It's a restored door. So that's the kind of work that would be done, but would be done as needed on that sill and on other sills. And the other thing that he pointed out was that if we're looking at, which we need to, painting, certainly the exterior of the windows and the sills, first, we would need to have that all scraped, and there's likely, the high likelihood of lead paint being dealt with there, so again, that would not be volunteer labor, that would need to be a contractor that's certified for lead paint issues.
When we had the sashes completely gone over, are you talking the sashes too, or the, the...
They took out and replaced windows that were broken.
No.
And put them back in.
A few years ago...
Oh, oh, right, okay.
They were all taken out, all stripped down, supposedly.
Not, I, I, yeah.
But the sashes, it wasn't the, the...
Right.
The frame of the window, but it was the sashes?
Right, and nothing was done to the sills that I'm aware of. That was back when I was just getting involved, I wasn't even on the committee yet, so I don't really know what, what the plan or the intent was coming into that. I came in while that project was sort of in process, and it seems to me, my recollection is that it, it ended up partially done by a contractor, and then the remaining windows were done by volunteer labor. And that was really just reglazing the, the windows.
It was reglazing, but I thought they had stripped all the paint and they had...
I think just where the glazing needed to happen, again, that goes way back, and I was really just barely getting involved and didn't know...
I can throw my two cents in because Lois was involved with that, so I know it was Tim Lilis doing the work, and he wasn't repainting the sashes, he was just supposed to be replacing any damaged glass or wood to them. They weren't all finished because there was an issue with his work.
Right, and whatever had been removed for work was finished by committee members.
Yeah, I think Dick might have done some of the work, except for...
He may, he may very well have things that were taken home. I just remember a workday in the Meeting House, and Lois and Liza and John, I think, and myself were there. I don't remember if, if anybody else was there. But anyway, that was a while ago, and the sills need to be painted. It doesn't look like any of them really need much in terms of restoration, but again, that epoxy work would be done to fill the grooves that are in the wood, and then, and then that would be sanded and smoothed and painted. So that would, again, be another job that would need to be contracted out. The other thing that I, I asked Chris's opinion about while he was there is that there is, as you turn to go up the stairs from the vestibule area, there's rot in the beam that runs across the front of the building where the tower attaches to the main part of the building, so it's the beam that, as you turn and go up those stairs, that's supporting those stairs. There's not a lot of weight being put on that at this point because the public isn't going up, it's not carrying a load significantly, but it is something to be aware of, and Chris's recommendation for that was, there are other things that are probably more important in the meantime, and what we could do is just get like square posts, put them against the wall up and support that beam on either side as you, as you were to go up the stairs, on either, inside of either stairway, there would just be a post against the wall that would be running up and under that beam, so, and then, you know, painted to match what else is there, but that's a, that's a temporary, easy kind of thing to do. And as I said, because the public is not going up there to assemble, it's not really carrying much of a load. It doesn't mean we can't go up and down stairs, and if we're taking anybody up there on building tours, we'd only be taking a few at a time, so we're not concerned about that.
Now, I would want to have to put up new stairs to the attic area.
That was also talked about. Have you looked at those recently?
Yeah, it's been a few years, but they, they weren't bad then.
So they're bad. There's no center support under that stairway, there's, you know, the boards are nailed on either side, and there's nothing supporting the middle, and the boards are bad. So one of the things we talked about with Chris was to be able to, again, this could be perhaps volunteer labor that we should call on.
I have to run out of the sandlot.
Well, we'll invite you back in on this one. We, we can cut boards the size and then just put them over what's there existing, and they would be a temporary fix to make the stairway more secure.
I'm thinking that that's, the stringers there are not solid or stable.
Stringers being...
Or the pins and the risers attached to it.
The two side pieces, yeah. I don't know that. I mean, that's where all the weight has been going at this point, because when we go up and down the stairs, we do it like this, we don't go up and down in the middle. And I don't know if there's any indication that those are not in good shape. What Chris said, stringer, now I have that vocabulary, that's what's missing down the middle, is that they're only on the sides, and there isn't one down the middle. And I don't know if you can put that in, or, you know, I'm not a carpenter, so I'd have to look to somebody that knows.
It, it seems as though supplementary wood could be added to those stairs, that, you know, and part of the key that Chris talks about is whatever you do, have it so it could be removed. There's no way we could put a legal set of staircase in that space, but at least, at least these stairs would be safe.
And he had no problems with the idea of, again, taking new boards cut to size and putting them over what's there.
I mean, if that would do it, I, like I say, I can't say that it's unsafe now, so...
So I need to get back to him with a sense of what we're working with in terms of our budget and funds available, and he will look back at the report and use what he saw that night that he was there and try and put together a plan, and I think he would also try and, you know, scope out costs for us on what's there, and we'll also need to hear from a timber framer. Beyond that work, we got to talking about the idea of handicap accessibility for the building, and it was interesting to hear his take on that. He said, the first thing you want to do is to get people in the building. Like, okay, that makes total sense, so that means putting a ramp on. But his idea, which I think is a much more obtainable possibility for us, is to think about creating a gradual gravel walkway that kind of goes along from the front where people would enter and drive in next to the bulletin board now, a walk path that would be gradual enough so that it can be used for handicap use and brings that up and around to access the building, with putting a ramp on the right-hand side door and still having the main entrance being the left-hand side door. So I thought that was an interesting concept. I have no idea what would be involved, but I think it's a more potentially accessible option to go with than some of the things that we've talked about in the past.
It's two numbers to remember. Your maximum allowable ramp slope is eight percent, but your approach to that ramp, to that ramp, is a maximum allowable two percent. I'm astonished that he would make a recommendation like that.
Oh, wow.
I mean, the most practical, if we had, if, if we had an easement on the backside of that building so you could drive around to the backside of that building, you'd have much easier access to that front there. I don't know, Sherry, Miss Long, you said something, maybe, maybe failing that, I don't know, if you, if you got up on the up hills, had parking on the uphill side, maybe you could achieve that two percent slope.
So you're saying that a walkway that was going up from the road in across the lawn, however it might, you know, kind of wind its way up there, none of that could be more than a two percent grade?
That's correct, yeah, that's, I, I, some, some versions they're called, they say you have one, one inch and four feet, you know, a little bit, a little bit more than two percent. So if we didn't, if we didn't have any walkway or anything there, had a handicapped accessible ramp there at eight percent, would that be alleviating that? Really, I'm thinking he might be thinking, is he should know this, and, and maybe, maybe there's an, you know, maybe there's a clause that says, well, we're doing the best we can. Maybe, maybe that's what he's thinking, you know, we, we can't achieve the two percent, but we're doing the best we can.
I'll check with him, and I don't know, is there, is there anything, no, there wouldn't be anything different for historic sites versus typical...
No, that's, that's across the board.
Okay, all right, I'll check with him on that. So we've talked with Tom about the drainage, and that's an important piece for us to know how much is available.
Material alone, about fifteen hundred bucks.
Fifteen hundred, okay.
That's what I was getting, somewhere in the next grid to do well by.
Uh-huh.
The reason we need an excavator out back is because the back of the town's got, there's no way to swing around and put your dirt behind you.
Right.
Or you've got to throw all the dirt up on a neighbor's lawn, put the stone in, and then you've got to come back in and try to get that dirt back out there. With a small excavator, you start on the upper end, you back your truck in behind it on the roadside, and you just keep swinging your dirt around the back of it, and then when you go to put your stone in, you back up, dig it out of the truck, and go back across with the stone. It's going to be cheaper and clean up a lot easier doing it that way.
Right, well, much more efficient is the way I understood it when you explained it to me.
Yeah, you know, they, you should be able to get somewhere, an excavator going in and do that whole drainage project in a day's time to, to run it all the way to the road.
How much do you think that in time that would take if you've got fifteen hundred in material?
Well, you figure, most small excavators are getting anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and ten dollars now. You figure the...
Thousand dollars?
Thousand dollars for an excavator. Figure they'd have to do it a day, they'd have to hustle to get it done. I think that you do it less than a day, but...
And we could use a town truck to take it away?
Like I told you, we can use a town truck to take it away, bring the stone back in and all that stuff. You just got to have that excavator up behind that building.
For the back wall.
Or it's going to take, it's, it's just going to cost you so much more to do it, to get the dirt out of there.
And, and we were talking the two sides and the back wall, right?
This is just the back wall.
Back wall is where we need the excavator, and you thought town... And you thought town equipment later could do.
Town equipment can do the side walls because you can get the dump truck up beside it.
Exactly, okay.
On back you can.
Right, right.
If it's worth getting dump truck around where you want it.
Right, right, I mean, you don't have. You're, you're, you're not on our land to begin with and it starts to go up like that almost immediately.
I figured, three feet deep, you know, fifty feet of stone coming out, bringing the stone right to the top, fabric over it. And then when you, once you get outside of the outside of the building, I would stop the stone unless you hit a lot of water going down across the lawn. And then, you know, you're, you've got a tunnel where it does this. If, if there's a lot of water as you're going down through there, you might go perforated pipe and stone all the way to the town ditch. And that would, that would dry that whole site out.
And perforated pipe in the back as well, right?
Right, in the back you need perforated pipe and stone. And out back, you should bring the stone right to the top of the ground. Once you get out of, from, out behind the building, you're headed down across the lawn, you might go, if you hit water in the bottom of the ditch, anybody doing it could tell. Because what are you going to do, you're going to, when you're digging down through there, you're going to see a rough stain. And that's called a high water mark. So you bring your stone right to that rough stain. And then keep going right down through. The lower that rough stain drops, the less stone you've got to use. And you just filter fabric over the top for the stone all the way down through it.
Is it springs under, by there or is it runoff from the hill?
Yeah, I think when Sherry and I went up looked at it, it had the mains quite a while and there was water in that little ditch. I think it's springs. And right down by the bulletin board, every spring for a while, it dried up right now. The water just boils right out of the ground, right, just above the maple trees down through there. And then the spring, you can't walk up the lawn on the roadside of that building. You're sinking in mud that deep all the way up through there. So I think it's springs. And I think the other drain coming out around the back of the building, you might have stolen all the way to the town ditch and drained that off. I don't think it would cost us that much more while you've got it open.
So, with all the work that you've described, in all different phases, do you have an estimate about how much you think this might cost?
I don't. I've been waiting for Tom to give us an idea of what the drainage work would cost. And I'm going to get back to Chris to try and get an idea of the, well, I'm not sure if he can tell us or if we need a timberframer to come in. I mean, we need to know how many, how many connections need to be addressed. So I'm not sure that we can really estimate that very effectively until we have that assessment done up there. So my, and we talked at the meeting the other night about whether there's anybody we know in town that has the skills to do that kind of an assessment for us. The other option is that we just contact Jonathan Jessup, who has done a lot of work in the building already and knows it very well. And he could go in there, I'm sure, and pretty quickly give us that assessment and, and probably an estimate for it.
Did he ask Rob and Dyke?
I haven't been in touch with Rob, but he was on my list of people to contact. He was up there and, you know, looking at it back when we were looking for bids two years ago.
You'll need, if it's over ten thousand, you'll need to get three bids.
Right, well, we need to put it out to bid. I mean, if we don't get three bids, besides putting it out, I don't know, you know, what do we do?
Well, we would put it out to bid and if we didn't get three bids, we would at least have the ones that, that came in.
Right.
We wouldn't have to have three come in if we, if we put it out for bid.
And we don't get three?
We don't get three, which is all fine. If it's, if it's a project like the lighting, we have to get three estimates.
I know Michael Parker right there, he does building restorations. You might want to contact.
I contacted him, I contacted his brother Chris back when we were doing the original project. And I never heard back from either of them with any interest in putting in a bid for it. But, you know, we certainly will do that again. And I have a list of people that did respond and others that we contacted directly. But this is going to be a much smaller scope, I would guess, project than what we were doing originally. So, I don't know, I don't know if that will encourage or discourage people from responding to it.
Do we, do we know how much money is in the account right now that we have to work with?
Well, that, is that counting or, I mean, Darlene probably has that figure. I've had, counting the money that will come in this year for tax, from taxes, from the, you know, from what was voted at town meeting, I think we would be at that point, we would have been looking at a total of twenty-eight thousand dollars, but it will be twenty-five, I mean, twenty-three because of returning the five to the housing fund. And that is also counting some funds that are currently in the Historic Society account that were fundraising that happened at the event last year and a donation that came in in the name of someone from town that was sent to the Historic Society.
In your fund balance right now, you have twelve thousand nine hundred and two dollars.
Right, so at fifteen, that would be twenty-seven. And then the, the other, so twenty-eight, as I said, was, twenty-eight was pretty much what I was figuring. Now minus the five, so twenty-three. And then we will be doing grant research. Janet has agreed to do some grant research. We've put together a list of possible grant sources. Candace is willing to write grants for us once we identify the potential grants that would be appropriate. Don sent us one of them, which we can look at. And we can, I spoke with Caitlin Corkins from the Division for Historic Preservation, where we got the first twenty thousand dollar grant and just wanted to see if it was possible to go back to them while we're really still working on the same thing. And she said yes. She couldn't guarantee that we would get funded for it because there may be new projects coming in that would take priority, I don't know. But we could certainly put in a request. If we were doing something like putting a ramp on the front of the building, which is separate work, obviously, it's not what we're talking about as the top priority right now. But if we were doing that, there are also funds through the Vermont Council for the Arts, which their facilities grant, which is very much about making things accessible. They were, I think, a major source of the funding that happened for Next Stage Arts to make that building fully accessible with an elevator. We're not looking to go that route by any means, but a ramp to the front door to get people inside the door is the first goal.
So, what do we think we want to, our capital first here? The drainage would seem like something that we would probably want to do this summer, wouldn't we? I mean, we've got the money for it. We've got, we'd like to get that water away from it now.
Right.
Yeah, I had no sense having the water keep coming back because then all the work you've done will just rot it again.
Yeah.
Yeah, although just the, the work that was done on the back, because that cement beam was used on the back wall, what it really did was raise the level of where the wood starts. So that's not going to be in touch with the wet ground all the time like it had been. So that's a benefit, but still, we do.
Although that cement will wick the water up against there, which the stone wouldn't necessarily.
Right, but it's sitting on stone.
Stone's going, you know, you're going to put your drainage stone in. It's not going to affect that up there. Could it go stay outwinked in the building?
Yeah, no, but I mean, as it is right now, that cement is going to be wicking the water up.
It might, but the way I looked, when I was up there looked at it, I don't think it's going to wick it up there that much. Because they got, they got it pretty well concealed on the back.
Silting was an issue that.
Serious issue.
I mean, I, I saw the result. Chris Cole actually identified it as silting. I, I saw what was going on. I thought it was the original state of that crawl space, but he said, no, that was, crawl space is much deeper, all that. And, and, and Sherry and I had been down there in the spring when there was a nice little stream running underneath there.
Yeah, I, I think we should probably try and get that done.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
This summer, next month or two. Get an assessment as to what it's going to cost upstairs for the rafters, for the.
And, and I'm not going to.
That is reasonable, but my concern is it's going to be way more than they, the Meeting House has funding for. Because I'm thinking it's probably going to be fifty to seventy thousand dollars to get that whole piece done that you're thinking about.
The drainage and the roof?
Well, the drainage.
The drainage, no, no, no. I'm just talking about all the pieces on the roof, especially if you want a long-term fix, not just a little bit. So I don't know.
Well, that's why I think we need the assessment. Have somebody come in, give us some idea as to what it, what it might be. And then we'd make a decision on that, right? Is that reasonable?
Yeah, absolutely. So I guess what I would look for is direction from you. It, it's sort of, you know, when we were entering into this process before, this was, the Meeting House committee was signing the warrants and presenting them to the board. So the committee was making decisions. So it's a little bit less efficient at this point and trying to understand how to go about dealing with that. So I guess I need your direction to say, is it okay to, say, contact Jonathan Jessup and say, what would it cost for you to come and do this? Here's what we need you to do, the assessment piece, not the work, but the assessment right now. Would you be willing to come and just do that assessment for us and tell us what's needed and an estimate of what that would cost?
I think it's reasonable to have him come and do that. If he's going to charge for it, you know, and it's going to be a substantial sum, I'd rather have you come back to us and say, you know, hey, it's going to be five hundred, a thousand dollars, something like that. And then we may say, ooh, hold. I, I suspect he's going to do it pretty reasonable if, 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 if at all.
I mean, most contractors, when they come to do an estimate, to give you an estimate what it's going to cost, they don't charge you to come do that.
That's what I'm thinking.
No, but you're hiring them generally, probably when you do that, whereas we're going into a bid process. So I don't know. I mean, if that's, if that's.
Most contractors, when they come, they give you an estimate. They're not, they're not looking at their guaranteed getting that job. They're going to come and look at and give you a price. Whether they, they charge for it or not, most contractors don't. Three estimates. They're, they're looking for work down the line. But any contract that comes looking at any work, if they really think that they're going to charge to get that work, most of them are looking at it, hoping they're going to get it.
So I, my suggestion is you contact him because he's familiar with the building. He's done the other work on it. Have him do the assessment, look at it. If it's going to cost, if he says it's going to cost whatever, I would rather have you come back to us before you have him go to it. Is that reasonable with you?
It's going to be how you figure, yeah.
Yes, if it's, if it's over, what, thank you.
Two hundred?
I was going to say a hundred and fifty, two hundred. I mean, he's not going to be there that long.
So if it's over two hundred dollars that he would charge, come back to us. And I'll make this a motion. I'll make a motion that we have the Meeting House committee proceed with the drainage of the back and the sides. And that Tom be assist them with, with however they're going to go about that and, and work with that.
We can take the town truck out, we can haul the stone with the town truck and all that.
Yep.
But they're going to have to get somebody with a small excavator to do it.
Alright.
So, keep performing on.
I'll make the motion that we, that we have the Meeting House committee go ahead with that. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alright. And I'll make another motion that, that Sherry can contact Jonathan Jessup to have an assessment done of the attic issues. If it's more than two hundred dollars, charge, then she'd come back to the board. And, but I will, I will leave it that we won't wait until July for that. That if, if so, we will, we can contact each other and decide whether to proceed or not proceed.
That would be great.
Is that just the attic he's going to look at or the sills and sashes as well?
Yeah, that's a good question.
I would, I would go right with the attic. I would.
Yes.
I'd be, to do the back part.
So, so are you saying in that, Tom, that, that Taylor's excavator is not going to be used for any work in town?
Well, at least. If it, if you put it out for bid, you have bid on it. But it won't be by the hour. Because doing it by the hour, people in this town is going to say, Taylor's right again, we got another thousand dollar backhoe setting in the garage and they're, they're asking. But he told me, he puts out for bid, he even bid on it.
Alright, I'll show you something else. Well, what I would suggest is that I would like Tom to be in on the, the laying out and the looking and, and all of the stuff with that, isn't that?
Yes.
With, you know, putting the stone in and however it goes with that.
Well, we'll be up there with the town trucks anyway, so we'll be there no matter who does it.
Yep.
You know, we'll have the town trucks up there.
So, Tom, you're saying they only need a small excavator up there, not a big one, right?
No, a small, a small mini excavator.
Do you know anyone?
I go Stevens, you got two of them. Jamie Gregers, you got two of them right in the garage.
Okay, so there's two people you can contact, but.
Okay, great. So, moving on. There is a concert scheduled for the twenty-fifth.
Of July?
July. Pam has arranged to have Peter Miles come in and do a concert in the building. And we're looking at this as perhaps the first of future summer concert series. And it is a free concert. We're doing it not, I mean, yes, we're going to have a bake sale during the concert and we're going to have, you know, donations and invite people to donate to support the building. But we're doing it more to raise awareness, bring people into the building. Not so much selling tickets at this point, but inviting donations to support it. So, that's happening on the twenty-fifth. And we are, I just got.
What time of day?
Six thirty to eight thirty. We'll be in touch with the neighbors for bringing electricity up as we've done in the past. And I just got confirmation the other day from the woman that runs the Thai Hut food vendor, familiar with folks from the Townsend Farmers Market. And she's going to set up on the lawn for folks to purchase dinner and picnic on the lawn before the concert. So, that will be on the twenty-fifth. We'll probably have her there like, I don't know, four thirty or five. And dinner, you know, get dinner ahead of time and then go in and enjoy the music. We'll have the building open ahead of time as well for tours. We'll have the bake sale going before and during. And then we've also tentatively put a date out, but I'm waiting to hear back from other committee members. We talked about the idea of just having an open house a couple of times during the summer. So we're looking at the fourteenth of July right now, tentatively. And we would have the building open and, and people there obviously for tours and, you know, talking it up and whatnot, from ten o'clock to two o'clock. And then there are other efforts, other activity type things that are in the discussion stage right now, but it doesn't, I, I'm not sure if any of those will come to fruition for this year or if it might be next year. And I can talk about that, okay. Oh, and before I forget, Tom, on the drainage piece, the other thing that Chris talked about, and this I'm sure is pretty standard, is that he would recommend, I think he said eighteen inches out from the side of the building, a drip line that's just all crushed stone all around. And he also felt that the level of the building should be brought down to what's there now, the lowest, and grade it out from there as opposed to perhaps bringing it up. Because we had talked about either or when I was there with you. So he, he said we want to bring it down to the level and not bring more material up against the stone foundation. I think that's it.
Alright. Tom?
Oh, boy. First thing, Tim Stevenson asked me to ask the select board, July twelfth, we're having an emergency management meeting and the, the item we're working on, what time is that? Oh, gosh, I think it was six o'clock.
I can probably pull up mine now.
Sherry can verify that, Tom. We're, um, the, the, the purpose is to work on a local emergency management plan which replaces and is, is, is more complicated than the local emergency operations plan that we used to have.
It's a, it's a, it's basically the same thing, but it's more adaptable to each town. The other one was the standard form for the whole state. This new one is more adaptable and.
Tim asked me a couple of weeks ago, and I don't know if he was asking for the whole select board there or if he wanted the chairman of the board, the selectman there, and the road foreman. I'm, I'm thinking it's the latter. I think he asked that the, uh, the chairman of the board and the road foreman, if he could be at this planning session.
We probably should, could all be there.
Because the two of you can't be there, cause it would.
If we made any decisions, it would be a form.
Well.
But it's not.
But we could, we could notar, uh.
If we, if we warn, if it could be in this meeting, is we gonna begin around that?
What?
I'd say, uh, well, the, if, if the emergency management meeting itself was warned, I don't know if that would cover it or, or if it would have to be a special select board meeting as well.
It could be, uh, it could be the, the emergency committee, yeah, joint meeting. Just, and want it as both, as the select board meeting.
Okay. July twelfth?
Thursday.
I'm not having any luck pulling up. Ah, here we go, July twelfth.
Thursday, the twelfth. Which would be the second Thursday.
Yep.
That would be here, six thirty?
Six, right.
Six or six thirty?
Six or six thirty. I, I thought it was six.
Six o'clock, yep, got it.
Okay, yeah.
Just in time.
Six P.
We should have minutes, but, uh.
Well, I think that Sandy's time to take minutes. No, it's not Sandy's time to take minutes.
Will be.
I, I don't belong to the emergency management meeting committee anymore.
I can be here.
Yeah, Tom, I'm slacking off.
Yeah, you need to be here for the select board meeting.
Yeah, stop down here, check on this stuff.
Yeah, but it'll only, it, the, the only, it, it's more training, I think, for the, for the new form.
This is getting the form filled out.
Completing the form with Rich.
And there's a lot of information there, then I'm sure I'm not gonna know a lot of it and.
But it's, isn't it training more too, to how to fill it out? More than just filling it out? Cause it's not due until next year, April first.
I know.
My, my impression from when, when the committee met with him before was that, uh, you know, you need to get working on this, I'm available to help you fill it out. And that, that was what I took, took.
That's perfectly fine, good, because it is a, it is a new form and it is a new, a new way of doing that. It's a few pages, yeah. The, the one we have now is. Alright.
That was, that was the first item. Second one, the, uh, I've, I, I've had the article that the, um, Athenian has forwarded electronically and there are copies of that article on the town clerk's desk and, and posted in the hallway. Wyndham Northeast is gonna be allowed to be, remain a supervisory union. Part of it is a legal technicality that I don't think any of us had heard up until the part of this. By the way, this is the, uh, Secretary of Education's recommendations, you know, having reviewed, uh, an application that was submitted in the fall to remain, uh, an alternate structure, supervisory union under the Act forty-six law. Lynn Morgan represented Athens on that committee. I, I, I wasn't involved in it. They, I, I did review their application, it was very thorough. They, um, they, they made a solid argument. They, it, it talked about how we're already substantially meeting a, a majority of the goals and plans we had to meet more of the goals of Act forty-six. That was, that was the, uh, they, they did include some information on, uh, how the voting went and, and, and why it was, different reasons why it was overwhelmingly rejected. My, my first read of the, um, of the decision, um, the decision kinda focused a lot on debunking the voters' reasons. It's, and I'm reading, it's like, no, no, I said, that, that's, that's irrelevant. Uh, the, the, the issue was that we're already meeting a substantial portion of the goals.
Yeah, I, I think that they, they indicated that, uh, the voters might have been short-sighted in that. I think also that they were, um, swayed by the idea that Athens, Grafton may become a district in and of themselves and that that was, that is being looked at.
Well, that was one of, of a few different things, yeah, um, by, by Athens and Grafton. Athens or Grafton right now, that's the Athens Board, it's the Grafton Board, and there's the joint Athens-Grafton Board. And, and what that means from a county perspective at the supervisory union is, uh, is that you have, you have three different budgets, you have, you have three different audits. And, and it's, and it's confusing for the Athens and Grafton voters. It's like, okay, we just, we just approved our, uh, the Athens portion of the K through six and, and now we're approving that same number plus the seven and eight tuition money. We're, we're, we're kinda voting the same numbers twice and that's confusing to the Athens, but, uh. So, so that would be part of the proposed streamlining. Um, it, it would, it would change, um, the Athens-Grafton representation to the supervisory union cause now, now they're one entity instead of two Athens, so they have to be two separate entities. And, and there are different things and then, you know, the, the voters will, that'll be, that'll be presented by the Athens and Grafton boards as, you know, as, as that, as that subject comes around. The, uh, the decision also looked at a, a separate issue. The, the, the four towns cannot be forced to be a, a single unified district because Athens, Grafton, Westminster have a different operating structure for grades K through eight than Rockingham does. And, and that legal technicality, because of those two different operating structures, we can't be forced to become a single district.
With Rockingham, but we could with Grafton and Westminster.
Well, you know, then there's, then there's, you know, should, can the state compel Athens, Grafton, Westminster to become a single, um, K through eight district? And, uh, the decision, and I've highlighted the, the wording out there in the lobby, and I think I mentioned in my report, they pretty much said to the effect that doing so is not going to advance the interests of Act forty-six. In other words, they didn't, they, it doesn't appear as though they could make, come up with a compelling reason why we should have to do that. They could, you know, there, if, if more things come to light between now and November, the final decision would be in November. But, but Chris Kibbe was quite confident that the decision that's been made now will, will probably stand, you know, extremely high likely that that decision will stand. And we, I mean, the other thing we're, the other thing we're doing to meet the goal, we're twice a year now, um, every, every single school board in the four towns meeting together in one place. We, we did this on June fourth. Not as much of a working session as I would like to have seen it, but, I don't know. Jack Brier in Grafton, he's left that meeting glowing, so I gotta, I guess I have to find out what I missed.
Anything else?
I'll try to go real fast.
Alright.
Cemetery Commission, um, we, we've had approval to move, by, by the Athens Select Board to move our funds that were in CDs, move those funds into, uh, a, a mutual fund with LTL Financial Services. At the time we were ready to do this, one CD was already maturing, so there was no penalty for, for closing that account out there. There was a penalty, uh, for the other one. And there was also interest from, from both accounts. And so the, the net difference, uh, we had interest, but we had penalties. The, the net differences, we were, we, we, we were down forty-four dollars and five cents by, by closing out those two accounts. So we had eleven thousand, four hundred, fifty-six dollars and nine cents to, to invest and that, uh, those, a check for that amount was given to LTL Financial Services on June seventh. And, uh, Darlene as treasurer and I as chairman of the commission, were, were the two people that the commission appointed as the signatories on the, on the mutual account. So we, we were told that, uh, we, we signed all these papers and we told, I could possibly be a glitch or, or if you go through. Well, there was, uh, um, we apparently have one will hang out, hang up, which, uh, which I gotta iron out with, with Darlene. Actually, it comes down to, uh, I, I, I'll, I'll straighten it out with Darlene.
Okay.
The other thing on cemeteries is that we, um, Chris Potter of Benton and Hennessy, there was a grave site service up at the West Cemetery, a new section. People were having trouble finding, you know, where, where is this, where do we turn in? Chris, um, Potter offered at his cost, uh, a seven inch, uh, seven inch by seven inch granite pillar which, uh, which would have West Cemetery engraved on it. His cost for the stone plus the cost of engraving, and the combination would be like two hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars. So the cemetery commission approved at that expense and the, uh, the, the commission asked that myself as chairman would work with the road foreman and if necessary, the rep from the O'Connor family to determine which is the best location for this stone pillar, um, to have it installed.
So would you want a motion from us for that?
Yeah, I, I didn't, I didn't know if, uh, you know, the, the road foreman at his discretion can, can help us with the cemeteries or if he needs approval for anything.
No, I think Tom can do that, if he wishes to. So, but if you want a motion, I'll, I'll make a motion that we, uh, that Tom assists them in, in laying this, uh, topless.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, we do thank the road crew and, you know, Tom and Matt for, for clearing the briers along the, uh, the old wall on the south end of the old section. Huge improvement. The chairman has, has failed to put together a volunteer contingent this, this season so far, anyway.
First day of summer, so there's plenty of summer left.
Yeah, yeah, I think my retirement is a long way off, but I could see that it'll be a busy one in this town. Okay. One last thing is the, uh, the status of the USDA equipment grant application. And I, I hadn't heard anything from USDA. I, I thought by now, well, the awards must have been determined and, you know, we, we didn't make the cut, but. No, Andrea Ansel and Adams was about ready to get ahold of me. There's, um, um, four different things that she asked me about. I had a quick resolution of three of them, but, uh, one of them was, uh, getting the report back done in, uh, back in late twenty-twelve, early twenty-thirteen by the Vermont Preservation Trust, you know, their, their assessment of the building. This was, and it, it had originally been suggested that, um, the vault and the heating system, we could, we could include those, uh, as, and an equipment grant application versus construction application cause equipment grant is, is, is much easier application process than a construction grant. And, and I'm not su, I'm not sure now, and they, next, you know, uh, next thing I know, we have a, we have a state architect that's come down to view the building. And, and it appears that, um, maybe I was misinformed about the vault client qualifying for equipment grant. That's, that, that wasn't spelled out for me, but it's kind of the vibes I'm getting from USDA now that, you know, they could, they could cover the heating system and maybe the vault, but, um, we're, they're still trying.
Okay.
I, I don't know if we'll make, if we don't make the cut this year, or it seems, it seems like we're halfway to next year's application deadline.
So do you need to switch it to a construction?
Oh, I hope not, cause that, that would, we have to get an architect involved. We're, we're still, we're still trying the equipment grant.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, Darlene, anything boards and officials? Alright, we'll move on to the policy review. We had the, uh, delinquent tax policy, uh, the cash receipt and petty, um, cash receipt, petty cash and return check policy. We changed, uh, what was it, one thing on the delinquent tax last month?
Yeah, we changed, um, the, um, personal pronouns to delinquent tax, I think, or something.
It was that, and in the, uh, delinquency, it was about the tax sale. We were gonna change.
Yeah, yeah, we changed that.
Until it comes to a tax sale.
Those would be the only changes to that?
And the other change on that one was, uh, the petty cash. The two hundred dollars, I think it was two hundred.
We did have a reading of those last month there. Do, do you wanna go ahead with approving these policies at this meeting? Or do we want to?
Um, I didn't, I'm not sure if we can without a second. Do you need a second reading or just the first is okay and then approve in the next meeting with the corrections?
I believe we can do it in one, in one meeting and then approve them the next, I believe. I could be wrong, but. Reasonable with you to do it? Cause we did review them both, you, and then we kind of, we, we stopped the review after these, when we got to the others, when we had some questions about them, so. Well, I will make a motion that we accept the petty cash rece, the cash receipts, petty cash and return check policy for the town.
Do you wanna do them one at a time?
Is there a second for that?
I'll second that one.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I will make the motion that we accept the delinquent tax policy for the town of Athens as written.
Hold on a second, uh, as reviewed.
As reviewed and written, yes.
Alright. And you second that?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You just need to sign that one. As treasurer.
Keeps us going, right?
Keeps him awake.
Was there a recommendation about reviewing these at all every so often from, from your meeting? Or once they're done, they're done?
Alright, we'll move on to roads.
You know, we all know that the block often, they're telling me that it's gonna happen. We're up now putting, uh, culverts in, the underdrain, they'll be coming in soon going to get it scheduled. Basin has brought gravel. I did find a couple flaggers in town and what I need is to have Darlene be able to pay them before the next letment meet, when we're done putting culverts in.
Alright.
Is, and they've filled out the W two?
They're coming, I told them that they had to come down Monday and do that.
Yep, okay. And it's, is that a day, that's an hourly rate or a daily rate?
Hourly rate. We pay after eighteen. I would pay these guys the same.
Okay.
And they're gonna stand up in that freaking road, everybody trying to run over here.
And how long will it be here, a week?
I don't think it'll be more than a week. I know like a Monday, it's gonna be a. I know like a Monday, it'll, it'll be a mile, probably Monday, probably Tuesday.
And so that's just for the culverts? Are we gonna need to provide our own flaggers when they do the paving?
No.
Or are they gonna have their, they'll have their papers, okay.
They have, they, they tell us that. We might have to hire the flaggers when we do the underdrain.
The flaggers we can pay, um, when we do your payroll.
Yep, next week.
Yes, I will make a motion that, um, uh, that we pay the flaggers, um, when we pay the road crew, um, and not have to wait to the next meeting.
I'll second that motion.
And other than that, I guess everything else is running good right now.
Did we have any or much damage from the, that storm?
We had, uh, I don't know, a couple of small trees, nothing big. Nothing like towns and go, we had a couple on the cemetery road, out on the other end. Little bit of brush on the re-ded, one right by Janet's house. And where the hell are those gone somewhere?
So if, uh, when the regional calls us for damage, if we, we did, we had not?
It's very low.
No. Got it down, well, he did it down and did. We was coming down Route thirty with a dump truck and that happened. There was frigging trees that big just flying down through the frigging air. Man, up there, yeah, fucking block.
There was, the, in Rockingham, there was some spots there that they just.
Well, we got, we got lucky on that one. And, uh, I bought fly, right now it's some dry out that I'm not gonna scrape a lot of oats until we get some rain, kinda donate the powder. And they weigh too much fly to get them back, so we're gonna wait on that for a while.
And what is the, um, trees and stuff gonna be cut for the power lines down the other end of Route thirty? They didn't say yet.
They ain't said yet.
Where?
They're, they're waiting.
Route thirty five. Route thirty five, I, I did say Route thirty, but I meant thirty five.
They, uh, they're waiting for the fishing game to get them up on it.
There, there was, I got an email, but I think it's, actually, we got it two of them. This is minor application, I think that's.
Well, the other thing we gotta be doing is putting that winter sand out for beds.
Okay.
Got it down, we put it in the paper, put it out bed early so we get it here before. It's put in there, it's gotta be delivered by the end of September.
Uh, all right, I will make a motion. I will make a motion that, uh, uh, that Tom get together the information for putting that to bed and that Darlene have it for next month's regular, uh, review.
Have everything sent to her on that Monday before. Same way we did the other one.
Yep, sounds good. Do I have sent or delivered, either one? Right?
Yep.
All right, ain't nothing else for roads?
No. Oh, the only other thing is mowing the oats. We're gonna try to get a, all the way out mowing. We think we can find somebody that's got one.
We put money in for that, um, how much was it Janet?
How much did you say they were a day? It was some, it was two thousand, I think.
No, Rockingham did it for six hundred a day.
Can't remember if we put in for two days of it or however.
Didn't we combine farms too?
Yeah, and we still have it in there for the moment. Which is two thousand, it's what it's worth as well.
So what is fishing website up there?
Do you have a, do you have a copy of the budget in your stack of papers, Jen?
I don't, right here, right now.
I think I took it out, 'cause I was looking at something, I don't know where it's at. I know last year it was twenty-two hundred.
But I know we put some in there for it, so.
I'm just checking out.
Yeah, I think we said, I think we said two days, maybe three days.
I'm probably grabbing them to come over.
What about, yeah, what about grafting? They've got a new machine, right?
But, well, I've got eight. I'd get on there and then.
And let me know, and if not, I'll try and approach Rockingham and then see if we can.
Yeah, and all that's Route thirty five is a jet and, uh, brush up twenty, he do one of them, no time.
In a day, what'd it take you?
Week.
A month to, all by hand.
So this says nothing about who takes the old poles away. It just says they can't, the new ones can't, can't be there for more than ten days prior to them being installed. And they have, what are you looking at?
This is a permit.
This is a permit for putting in the poles going down Route thirty five. So it doesn't say in here who's responsible for removing the old poles. It says the per- the permittee, um, shall not allow the utility poles to be staged on the ground for more than ten days prior to the installation and that they shall transfer all the wires, cables within thirty, another facilities, within thirty-six months of the new poles being in place. So even though they put the poles in, they could take up to.
Three years.
Three years to switch the wires, but it does not say.
Well, out there where they're gonna have to do something before they put all the new fiber optic and everything, cut the woods and everything. Now, they've gotta run all new fiber optic before they can take that out of the wood. That's what the problem.
Yeah, but they can still move the electric part, it's just.
Electric part, oh.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's just the other part.
They've already taken all the old electric wire out of the woods. That's all done.
So it's kind of talking about poles that are still up and in the woods or poles that are down on the side of the road?
No, it's up in the woods, up in the woods. Um, we have a, uh, contract here with James Oil for, uh, town office, but is it just the town office?
Yes, we called them, um, this morning and they were working on the one for the number nine. And they were supposed to come in with something, but it's a. So that's for the big oil?
Yeah, it will, it's, yeah, it's the contract and it's, uh, two eighty-nine, nine.
Almost done now.
Or three hundred and seventeen gallons is what they estimate.
Not prepaid?
Budget prepaid contract.
I would make a motion if we could do that, all right? I think we save money on that.
Yeah, three hundred and seventeen gallons is what they estimate, so. Second round.
Yes, I do.
All right. All those in favor? Aye.
All right.
Aye, sorry, I'm still reading this.
And I will sign.
See, for this one, it says, "All worksite in construction shall be completed in accordance with the approved plans by August first, twenty twenty-one." So if you don't get it in this plan saying who is responsible for removing all the old poles.
You don't get it in?
You don't get it in.
They are going to be cutting on, for non-.
It's already done?
It's almost done. It's just a couple weeks.
That's the one out here. It's, um.
Do it each time.
Oh, okay. He's gonna lose it if he doesn't pay the taxes. I haven't had one contact from them.
Really?
I send them a, uh, bill every month and I haven't heard from them.
Well, it's crazy, could tell the heat ran on top of it, you know?
Did they start this before we got the letter?
Uh, they, they've not taken.
Well, I've had, when did I get the letter?
July eleventh.
July eleventh.
Two weeks ago, a week ago.
Yeah. Remember when they started?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago?
Darlene, you talking about the logging?
Yeah.
They were doing that on the first when I was over here for supper.
I didn't remember what the second.
Yeah. This is a, uh, contract with the Wyndham County Humane Society, um.
For strays?
For strays to be taken there as a new contract between, uh, July first, twenty eighteen to, um, twenty nineteen, June, the end of June.
What are the charges for strays per day? And is that just strays or quarantine dog bites as well?
Eh, exclusions, will not hold aggressive dogs. Be picked up, forfeit in person, aggressive dog is, will not hold. No feral cats, feral kittens. Years' range of six animals required immediate veterinary care they won't take. Will not hold animals. Wyndham County Humane Society will not hold animals for rabies observation. Cannot safely sequester such animals from public. The town is responsible for rabies holes, so no, if it's a bite and they have to hold it, they can't.
Well, if it's a bite for, but if it's a rabies hole, they, they don't hold it, but if it's just a.
An aggressive dog.
An aggressive dog? They won't take it, aggressive dogs anyway.
If it's, it will not hold aggressive dogs. And I guess that's arbitrary, which, what is aggressive and what isn't, so. But they won't do a rabies hole.
And what are the charges per day?
I'm looking, I don't see.
I thought I read somewhere it needed thirty dollars, but I maybe I.
And we take them there instead of Springfield?
Yes. Town should pay, like, fee of, as I say.
Well, I see a dollar sign, but there's a blank after that.
It's not, sir. But I'm not sure if this is the actual contract, 'cause they have lined out where it was, what difference, the differences from last year's to this year's.
Yeah, I see, but so you're thinking that that's something. Tom, for this, do, do we have a grant, we have a grant for that?
Yes.
For the water?
But I, I think, I'm not sure that the fees that they're charging there are included in the grant.
Oh, okay.
What was that for?
Contract for animal holding.
Six thirty nineteen.
Yeah, it goes from two, it goes from July first, two thousand eighteen to Route thirty, two thousand nineteen.
So July first, two thousand eighteen to?
Yes.
Six thirty nineteen.
Um, we also have a contract, uh, for the sheriff's department, it's on the year.
They've gone out.
We, we put into that, I think we, in the budget, we went up for that as well. I will make a motion that, uh, that we approve the contract. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, Darlene, I don't have to call him, he's a, pretty good at that grant, I don't think they have.
No, I think those, I think we have to pay that, but. So, why don't we approve the contract, um, with them, but we check for the, for the fee and if it is.
Well, you really should know how much it'll charge you before you sign it.
If it, yeah, but if it, I'm not gonna say we sign it. We get an actual good copy of this back before we sign it, um, but we check and find out what the fee is.
Okay.
Uh, and if it is an increase on last year's, and I think it was like thirty dollars a day. So you wanna do that, want to have hold of them? Ask him for an actual clean copy of the contract and.
Um, yeah, I can do that.
The only, the only thing I would say of, of why we would want to do that is we don't want to be without a place to impound, um, from July first to our next meeting in case we have to, in case we have to impound something.
So you're gonna, um, approve the, the motion to approve?
Yes, I mean, sometimes they just leave that in, just so that you can see what the difference is and that's, that's really obvious.
Yeah, I, u- usually, yeah, I mean, but.
Yes, that's fine.
Yeah, why don't you just check with them, see what the figure is and we authorize you to sign, uh, the agreement, uh, if it is reasonably within what last year's was.
And you're thinking last year's was thirty dollars?
I don't think we took any dogs down there last year, but I think that's what, for some reason, that's sticking in my head. I, I can't be sure on myself.
Okay.
Is that reasonable with you?
Yep, I don't think we took any down there last year either.
But we do need a place to take them if we, if we have them.
I will leave this with you, I will call them and I can swing by on Monday and sign it if they say, give me a figure and I can have them email you a new one if, if need be, or we can just write, write it in and, or they can send it to me.
I made the motion, Tom seconded it, all those in favor? All right. Executive session, I'm not sure that we need one, do you have any?
I don't have anything.
Nothing. Select board comments.
I do not have any.
Uh, the mailbox, I already spoke about, um.
So I will be just with you and I will figure out what they want to change with that.
All right, public comments on agenda items, it can't be on anything other than what was on the agenda. Sandy?
No.
Jenna?
I, I thought the town's garage lighting project was going to be on the agenda and it wasn't, um. Just that, an oversight, or it just didn't get there?
I thought we were, I'm not sure, it may have been supposed to be on the agenda and I didn't get it on there, just, if it was supposed to be there, it was an oversight on my part, but...
Tom is gonna contact Scott Amadon, Amadon, Amden, and two others and get some...
So that's, so you've discussed that?
I, I gave him the number.
For, to get the quotes for, for what it'll be, and then we'll bring it up to...
Once the quotes come in, then we'll...
Okay.
Then we'll go about deciding, probably, and we won't do that before next meeting to decide. So, on the agenda.
On the, yeah, boards and officials meeting houses, that's gonna, as I qualify, um, I, I really don't know what I'm asking. I, I know, I know the situation with the butter on the meeting house, the backside of the building, I know that, that parcel, there's some complications. If it were all possible for the board to get an easement or, or right away, where cars could get around the back of that building, there could be, there'd be a lot of parking space on the other side of that building that would not obstruct the view that we have now, and accessibility would be, for, for everybody, would, would be so much easier. It's, it's sort of a ideal situation, but what was described tonight, if it's, if it's all we can do, and we'll make the best of it, but it would be nice to leave the current view of the building undisturbed.
I don't believe we can get a right-of-way or a easement as things now stand with that.
And I guess the second alternative might be roadway up to that level, for, for everybody with a certain amount of designated, eh, gig. But anyway, it was just a...
Yeah, I, I'm not dis...
The goal was the historic view of that building.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with you, but I, at this current point in time, I don't believe it's possible to get a, to get an easement or a right-of-way through there.
I, I know, I know there are kind of locations with that parcel, right?
I know, at this point.
David, there's one more that's playing in the air, I think there has to be something else assigned or...
Well, this is a grant agreement. Did you bring this up, from the... This is for the road up there.
Which road, there?
Well, that's very far. Indicate that we have insurance. You make a motion that we sign this?
Yes.
Is that the grant that we set up?
The, the only thing I see is it says nine zero five six Brookline Road, which should just be fifty-six, but... No, this is not that, this is for an inventory. This is for the, uh, for the grant that we have for the little stormwater. I will make a motion that we sign the stormwater grant. Paperwork for the, showing that we have the insurance and such. Just give that to Darlene. All right, Dolly, public comments on the agenda. Go.
I'd like to know when approximately the blacktopping is going to be done on Route thirty-five?
We do not have a date for you on that.
This year, next year?
Hopefully this year.
This fall?
Hopefully this...
Winter?
Not winter, hopefully this year.
So it'll be done before winter, then?
Let's hope.
Okay.
Anything else? Any further business? Do we, did, I get a second to sign that, that we approve that?
Janet, yeah.
Okay, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Any further business? Think, because it says, when you, she's... I will make a motion adjourned? Twenty-first.
Yes, I do.